So at this time, I am going to call the City Council Workshop to order for Tuesday, July 3rd, 2018. Let the record show that the entire council is present and they are here. So with that, we're going to start our discussion items, DS items. DS 18-055, discuss agenda items for regular city council meeting of July 10th, 2018. And first thing is on the agenda is our minutes, MN 18-014, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of June 26th, 2018. That was last week. Any questions or comments on those? Seeing none, we're going to move on to our resolutions, RS 18-051. Consider resolution authorizing the award of bid number 18-14, Colleen City Hall Council Chambers Remodeling Project. Mrs. Hinkle, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is the award of bid 18-14, which is the Council Chambers Remodel Project.
I need to be called up.
Okay, I'll give you a moment. So some background on the project. The Council Chamber remodel project was allocated as a CIP project in the current budget. On February 20th, the council gave the city manager direction to go ahead and move forward on the proposed plan that was presented to council that evening. Funding for the project is currently in two funds. The PEG fund, or the Public Education and Government Fund, for $300,000, and the CIP fund for $196,028. After further review and guidance on expenditures using the PEG funds, it's realized that PEG funds can be used for most portions of the project. However, this funding approach will require a budget amendment in the future, as only $300,000 is budgeted now, but more funding in that fund is available for this project. The city did contract with L.S. Johnson Architects for the design and project development. Bids were advertised on April 29th and May 6th, and the bids were open on May 17th with four bids received. So just to jog your memory here, this is the conceptual drawing from the architect. The design will obviously greatly enhance the dais area. It's going to raise the ceiling height above the dais. It will create a new dais and provide for acoustical decorative paneling, new ramping on both sides of the room, new carpeting, new lighting, new podium and new placement of the podium, new upholstery for the seating, and a complete overhaul of the technology for meetings and recording capability. The architect reviewed all the bids received and noted that there were several inconsistencies in the bids. The bids ranged from 289,500 up to 583,737. The largest disparity noticed was in Division 13, which is the audio and visual portion of the project. Those bids ranged from little over $4,500 to $183,000. After more research and review, the architect is recommending removing Division 13 from the bid and let the city issue a separate RFP for that portion of the project. An RFP process will allow for a better opportunity to develop exact system components and will still allow for coordination with the general contractor within that contract timeframe. The contract is also, I mean, the architect is also recommending accepting the deletion of alternate number five, which is the V-shaped portion on the surface dais. So if I can explain just a little bit, on the dais, there was an inset that you could have possibly slid a laptop or something in, but because of the radius of the dais, it's going to be very, very complicated to do. It's not going to really gain you anything, so we're recommending that that just be deleted. You'll have a flat surface.
That's where the, is that where the TV is right now? Because we have a TV right there. So that's what you're talking about?
Yes. So it'll remain flat. Yeah, okay. Also, the bidding terms and conditions give the city the right to reject any part of the bid and also reserve the right to accept any item or group of items of the bid. These provisions will allow Division 13 to be eliminated from the bid, as well as deleting alternate number five from the bid. While Mitchell Construction is not the low bidder after removing Division 13 and alternate number five, the architect is recommending Mitchell Construction Company for this project based on their past experience and performance with similar projects. They have extensive experience with this type of project that involves casework such as a dais, and they have excellent references and provide the best value for the city for this type of scope of work required. FCO Construction is the apparent low bidder. Their experience is limited for this specific scope of work. They do have a good reputation, however, they are lacking in this experience for this type of work and also this size of job. In the awards section of the bid packet, it does say that the contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, or if applicable, the responsible bidder who provides goods and services at the best value for the municipality, based on, but not limited to, the following factors: past experience with product or service, city's evaluation of the bidder's ability, financial strength and ethical standards, quality of the bidder's goods and services, bidder's past performance, and the reputation of the bidder and of the bidder's goods and services. And for these reasons, the architect is comfortable recommending Mitchell Construction There are options. You can award the bid to Mitchell Construction Company. You award the bid to the lowest bidder, reject all bids, and rebid the project, or not award the project at all. And the recommendation for you this evening is to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Mitchell Construction Company in the amount of $277,407.43, and that the city manager is authorized to execute, and all changes allowed by state and local law. Be happy to answer your questions.
Any questions? So on the technology part, you know how the TVs are there, and I don't know if you've covered this or not, but the council members, how are they going to be able to watch presentations up there?
Yes, Hillary can talk to you about AV all day.
So those monitors, as you recognize, are from about 1990.
Mm-hmm.
So what we're going to do is replace, you won't have them at the dais anymore. You'll have your laptops for your agenda items. There's going to be a very large monitor mounted at the back of the room, under where I sit, so that you'll be able to see it much bigger than this, but it will be large enough for you to see. And there will also be two very large monitors on the sides of the walls, one that swivels out and what, excuse me, one that the staff that's sitting off of the dais will be able to see.
Okay, that's good. Very good. Mr. Rivera?
Does it include in the citizens sitting around, they'd be able to see it also?
They're going, so, oh, can we go back to the photo? Oh, it's here. I'll show you. Okay. So, so in the way that this has been laid out, it will just be the mayor and council who sit at the dais area? I'm just going to hold this, is that okay? As I Vanowite. The city secretary will sit over in this area, and then the city manager and city attorney will be sitting down here where they're sort of curved in, where they can look at you. There is a large monitor that will be mounted to this wall, above where the ramp is right now, and one that's mounted above their heads back here. This one will swivel out during the meeting, so the audience will have a very good view of the PowerPoints and things. There's going to be the one back here that you view, and this one will be intended for the purposes of their seeing, if that makes sense.
Yeah, okay, that's good. My other question was, when we started doing all this, I asked if we were going to have a specific area for the press to sit in. Are we going to have a specific area for the press to be able to sit in?
They're going to have, they're going to have access in the audience area, the same way that they do now.
Okay.
Mr. Menke?
I had a question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Shaw, I had a question. I'd heard it, and I don't remember if it was one of the meetings. Is there a method to indicate to the mayor for requests for time on agenda items?
There will be.
Okay.
There's a module in your current agenda system that is not turned on, but we're looking at actually having a mechanical module so that there's no failure if there's an internet connection failure. So it'll be, you press a button and he'll see a list of who's next.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Do you have something, Mr. Johnson?
Just a question for you, and I know normally the mayor sits next to the city manager, where he can give you advice. Are you okay with him being that far away from you?
I think we can still communicate, you know, just like we do here in the council. We can still talk to him and still can the council, so I don't think we tell each other any secrets up there, so. Anybody else? Ms. Fleming?
I don't have anything. I think it's a wonderful thing, and I can't wait to enjoy that.
Yeah.
I just want to make.
Sure.
Put a mic in front of me, and I'm going to talk. The one thing that I just want the public to understand in all of this is that the city council meetings and workshops will now occur in this space. That's part of the reason for the upgrade, so that you'll have larger screens where you can view the more detailed presentations that are given in this environment. But they'll also be livestreamed, which we're not able to do now. We're taping and playing back. So I think that's going to be an improvement to the viewing public at home, and I just wanted the public to know that.
Is there anything that we are going to be doing that kind of differentiates between a workshop and a council meeting? I know, because everything's going to kind of look the same, so, I mean, maybe we should figure out something.
I think so. Well, and some of that will be addressed in your protocol and the way that you manage meetings, but then that's also a discussion point that we'll need to have in the future about how you wish to address or interact.
Well, I mean, like on the TV, because, you know, you're watching it at home, and you don't know whether that's a council meeting.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Or a city council meeting. Maybe there's something there that, you know, a light, a color, or something that you can identify automatically as an audience member between a council meeting. Right here, we can do it, because, you know, but when I'm watching this, I want to, is that a council meeting or is that a workshop?
I think we can digitally stamp them, so that you'll be able to tell what they are.
Something, yeah. Exactly. So, okay. Mr. Kilpatrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Timeline, timeline for completion?
The project is scheduled for 90 days, so whenever it gets approved.
From 90 days from award?
From contract signing. So typically, after your award, it takes us about two weeks to get bonds and all of that in place, and insurance, and then two weeks out. So we're looking the end of July, and then 90 days.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Is that it? All right, thank you. Next is RS 18-052. Consider memorandum resolution authorizing a lease agreement for mowing equipment and parks and public grounds. Mr. Williams, welcome.
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council, the item before you today is to consider parks and public grounds, mowing equipment. Parks and public grounds, quick overview. They maintain over 1,000 acres of property. They mow just under 800 acres per week, 134 acres biweekly. We maintain 22 athletic fields, 23 parks, and three trails, soon to be four trails. Mission essential equipment, our current lease will expire on the 31st of this month. What are the benefits of the mower replacement? Via the lease method, provides us with up-to-date warranted equipment, provides increased efficiencies in our mowing operations, less time is spent repairing equipment. And staff is provided with six mowers and two infield groomers. You can see the size on there, it's a 72-inch mower. There's three of those, 100-inch mower, there's two of those, and a 60-inch mower, which is one. Naturally, the bigger the size of the mower, the more field that we can cover with each path. And the infield groomers are important, because that maintains the dirt on our baseball and softball fields. Fiscal impact, we obtained competitive pricing via the buy board, as well as one non-buy board vendor. The FY 1718 budget does include funding in an amount of $6,323 for this. Staff is recommending a three-year lease with professional turf products, and you can see the fiscal impact in the first year. It'll cover four years, because we're picking up three months in the current fiscal year, and you can see the total impact of $113,828.76. The next slide, you'll see some pictures of the mowers that we will be obtaining for this. On the upper right, that's the infield groomer. Then you'll see the other three mowers, 72, and 60, and other lengths. The alternatives would be to purchase the equipment we're currently leasing, and then own it and continue to operate with that equipment, but of course, it will be without warranty, or return the current equipment and just function with the reduced-size mowing fleet. Staff's recommendation, city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with professional turf products, PNC Equipment Finance for the lease of mowing equipment. And I will take any questions you may have, sir.
Any questions? Mr. Harris?
Is this the company that we normally rent equipment, or lease equipment from?
No, this is actually a change. Professional turf products slash PNC, we've done some work with them, but we used to use C&amp;M, but that company just recently went bankrupt, so we're no longer working with C&amp;M.
Okay, because I was reading through the policy of the contract here, and he was talking about trade-ins and allowances and how you can get credit for, so I was just wondering if we had anything to trade in or get credit for.
No, because our current lease is going back, and Mr. Ventos there, correct me if I'm wrong, we are returning the equipment on a previous lease, and it's just an even swap back, and now we're starting a totally new lease. And how we do is, we turn them back. This is not a credit lease on this particular one.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Menke, you got? All right, thank you. RS 18-053. Consider memorandum resolution to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the United States Marshal Service. Chief Kimball, welcome.
Good evening again, everyone. The item before you today is to enter to an agreement with the United States Marshal Service. The primary mission is to investigate and arrest as a part of a joint law enforcement operations persons who have active state and federal warrants. This allows for an officer to work directly with the Marshal Service and have direct access to the equipment, personnel, and intelligence. It improves the department's ability to track and arrest wanted fugitives from Colleen within the United States. It enhances the department's ability to arrest wanted persons from other jurisdictions who reside in Colleen. There are no expenditures for entering into this MOU. The Marshal Service will reimburse the city for any overtime spent, if funding allows, for the Colleen Police Office or assigned to the task force for work-related agreement. The Marshal Service will also provide an unmarked vehicle, if funding allows, to the officer, to the city for no cost. It's the recommendation from staff that the city council approve the memorandum of understanding with the U.S. Marshal Service and authorize the city manager or his designee to execute the agreement.
Mrs. Nash King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
Will the officers be coming off of patrol, or would be detectives that will feel, if this is approved, to fill that position?
We have, we have a detective in our organized crime unit that's currently doing the work already. They will work jointly with, they will continue doing their work here for the city, and with time allowed, they'll kind of split time between here and with the Marshal Service. It's not full-time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Harris?
So I notice you said, you used the words, as far as the overtime, you said if funding allows. Hopefully, it does allow, but do we have available funds to cover the overtime, just in case funding doesn't allow?
The funding would be on the federal side. So long as the federal budget has overtime for it, we will pay it and they will reimburse us. So long as the federal government is up and running, we will get reimbursed.
All right, cool. That works. Thank you, sir.
Fleming?
Chief?
Yes, ma'am.
I think it's a wonderful thing, and I know we need the U.S. Marshals. Would you just possibly tell me how many that we will be, Aaron?
We.
The U.S. Marshals.
Yes, ma'am. The United States Marshal Service has offices in Waco, San Antonio, Houston, throughout the major cities. We'll be working out of the Waco and San Antonio office. I don't know the exact number, but we will have one officer who is assigned to the Colleen Police Department work with that task force. So even though we may have one officer, we may have the whole field office, 10 to 15 agents, at any time, working on clean cases.
Oh, okay, then that's how it's going.
It's like a force multiplier.
All right, thank you, thank you.
So Mr. Rivera, then Mr. Menke. So Mr. Rivera?
I've got a simple question.
Yes, sir.
You got the U.S. Marshals come to our city to work for free and fight crimes. I hope we get them over here yesterday instead of today. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. They're already here.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Menke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, is this MOU, is this the first one, or is this reinstating one that we've had in place?
It's a reinstatement.
Okay, we've had it?
We have them with DEA, U.S. Marshals, ATF.
And those have been established for many years?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? That's it. Next is RS 18-054. Consider memorandum resolution to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Central Texas College Police Department. Mr. Chief Kimball?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. The item before you today is to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Central Texas College Police Department. CTC Police Department has primary jurisdiction for supplying police services on all its property under their control. The CTC Police Department and the Colleen Police Department desire to have a MOU outlining procedures for mutual aid, communications, and operations. This agreement includes coordination in responding to major crimes or events, procedures to request aid, daily radio communications, jail procedures, joint investigations, et cetera. The MOU renews automatically each year, up to five years. Either party may revise or terminate the MOU in writing, and there are no expenditures for entering into this MOU. It's staff's recommendation that the city council approve the MOU with CTC Police Department and authorize the city manager or his designee to execute the agreement.
Any questions? That's an easy one. Thank you, Chief. RS 18-055. Consider memorandum resolution dissolving five ad hoc council committees. Yes, Mrs. Davis?
Good morning, Mayor. All right, council, just last week, you adopted your governing standards and expectations, and that document provides that an ad hoc committee will be given a specific temporary task and a sunset deadline, and that an ad hoc committee ceases after the specific purpose for which it was created is accomplished, or the sunset date arrives, whichever is earlier. And you have five ad hoc council committees. You can see them listed there. The solid waste outsourcing and the management audit advisory committees have both concluded their purposes and no longer meet. The remaining three meet infrequently and do not have specific temporary tasks or sunset deadlines. You have two alternatives. You can dissolve all five ad hoc committees, or you can dissolve the solid waste outsourcing and management audit advisory committees, since they have clearly completed their tasks, but you can keep the remaining committees and give them specific temporary tasks and sunset deadlines in accordance with your new governing standards. Staff's recommendation is that the council dissolve all five ad hoc council committees, recognizing that if the need for an ad hoc committee arises in the future, one could be created at that time and given a specific temporary purpose and a sunset deadline in accordance with your governing standards and expectations.
All right. Any questions? Easy one.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And that moves us into public hearing items. PH 18-015. Hold a public hearing and consider ordinance adopting the 2018-2019 Annual Action Plan describing use of funds and authorizing application for and allocating of community development block grants, our CDBG, and home investment partnership program funds. And this will be the second of two public hearings. Mrs. Hinkle, welcome back.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, council and mayor. This is the second public hearing for the CDBG and home programs for fiscal year 2019. So the city does receive the two federal grant programs from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Each program does have national objectives and regulatory requirements. Under the CDBG grant program, there are three national objectives that must be met to be considered for the grant funding, and those are an activity must benefit lower, moderate-income persons, or the activity must eliminate slim and blight in the community, or the activity must respond to emergencies such as natural disasters. 15% of the grant can be used to fund public service programs and activities. 65% of the grant can be used to fund housing, public facility improvement projects, and 20% of the grant is allowed for the overall CDBG program administration. The home program only has one national objective, and that is the development of affordable housing. 90% of the grant is used to further affordable housing, and 10% of the grant, and 10% of any program income can be used for program administration. The application cycle began in February with community planning meetings. The applications were made available on February 26th, and technical workshops for applicants were conducted on February 28th, March 7th, and March 13th. CDAC Committee met in May to review all the community priorities, develop the application criteria, and to hear presentations from the applicants for the FY 19 CDBG and home program activities. The recommendations from the committee are going to be presented again by Ms. Driver-Moultrie. The public hearing schedule allowed for a 30-day comment period that's going to end on July 10th, and any comments received at the first public hearing are addressed later in the presentation that evening. And after that final public hearing in July, the city will submit the Annual Action Plan to HUD on August 15th. And I'll let Ms. Moultrie come and do the recommendations for you.
Welcome, Mrs. Moultrie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. If it pleases the council, I'm just going to read the agency and the recommendation. We have been through this one, so for time's sake, if that's okay, and then we'll be free to ask questions afterwards. Community development block grant, public service funding request. Agency, bring everyone in the zone, $12,070.60. Heritage House of Central Texas, $5,000. Communities and schools of Greater Central Texas, $21,000. Families in crisis for client transportation services, $2,500. Families in crisis homeless shelter case manager, $20,000. Hill Country Community Action Association, $9,490. Greater Colleen Free Clinic, $27,000. City of Colleen Community Development Elderly Transportation Program, $50,000, which brings a total to $147,060.60. Housing, public facilities, and improvement funding request. City of Colleen Community Services, Bob Gilmore Senior Center, $574,447.5. City of Colleen Community Development Housing Rehabilitation Program, $87,362, which brings a total to $661,809.5. CDBG Administration Funding Request. City of Colleen Community Development, $196,080.80. Total, the same. Home Program Affordable Housing. Bring Everyone in the Zone, $22,762. Heritage House of Central Texas, $12,500. Families in Crisis, $175,000. City of Colleen Community Development Home Buyer Assistance Program, $100,000. City of Colleen Community Development North Colleen Housing Redevelopment Program, $217,915.5. Chodos Set Aside, $65,801.70. City of Colleen Community Development Program Administration, $48,849.98. Brings a total $642,828.73. Any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Johnson?
That was Brett Williams.
Mr. Williams?
I was trying to find an email that you sent me about the total renovations. Is this enough to complete all renovations? We need to get more. I'm ready to be done over there.
No, sir.
I'm pretty sure the seniors are, too.
This will just be phase two. The first phase, which will cover the ADA compliance for the entrance in the restrooms. Phase two is going to make its way into the kitchen area and all the finishes. So we'll have stove, refrigerator, countertops, cabinets, a little bit of a redesign on there. And there'll be some flooring that's probably involved in there, probably the lighting, but this will just be the second phase. We've still got, still got a little ways to go.
A little ways, that's in like halfway to go? Is there a light at the end of the tunnel?
I definitely think there's a light at the end of the tunnel, especially if we continue to get favorable, you know, consideration from CDAC. The next phase would be, and this phase, we may be, me and Leslie, we're going to meet next week and talk more about this, but we're hoping we can get to the front and redo the game room, and the entrance, and some office realignment, so you can meet and greet the public better. So in a perfect scenario, that will get in here, but I don't know if it's, you've got, bids have got to go out, but I'm confident that we will get the kitchen in. And then the next phase after that would be that back entertainment room on the right, and there would be the patio enclosure, then an open-air patio as well, and potentially a connection down to the trail. And then we'll be done.
Well, I'm hoping we get it done soon, that way we can free up cash for other Well, I'm hoping we get it done soon, that way we can free up cash for other organizations, but the Bob Gilmore Center badly needs it, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mrs. Nash King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Leslie.
Ms. Driver-Moultrie. Last week I had asked why they were not fully funded for this project, and my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, there are some grants that will assist with following up on this project to complete it?
Well, there were some prior funds, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Hinkle, there were some prior funds that weren't used from another agency that we reprogrammed, and so they were able to, the Bob Gilmore Senior Center was able to get those funding for this actual fiscal year, if I'm correct.
So the amount that you stated, there are more funds out there to assist with this project other than what you stated? Okay, thank you.
Yes, if you'll remember, earlier this year, the Girl Scouts, that project was canceled, so the Council recommended that go to the Bob Gilmore Center, so that was two hundred and nine thousand, plus this amount, and so that will be one project together.
And that's phase two?
Well, that was phase one, this is phase two.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to do it all together.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right.
Have a happy fourth.
All right, you too. PH eighteen dash zero one six, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by the Bell Toms Group Inc., case number Z eighteen dash ten, to rezone Lot One, Block One, Urban Air amended from B five Business District to B C one General Business and Alcohol Sales District to allow for on-premises alcohol beverage service. The property is located at twenty-one oh two Jennifer Drive in Colleen. Mr. McAween, welcome.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This case does involve a property owner, the proprietor for Urban Air, which is currently under construction on Jennifer Drive, they're requesting to be allowed to provide onsite alcohol sales. Understanding is that the property owner is looking at beer and wine, but no mixed beverages for the site. Urban Air is essentially a recreation experience. It does allow activities for the children, but of course they require the parents to be there, so I think they're trying to tap into that market while the parents are waiting, and the children are having fun. The property at twenty-one oh two Jennifer Drive is highlighted in blue. What you see in the surrounding community is commercial pretty much to the east and to the north, and then there are some quadruplexes, fourplexes along the other side of Jennifer Drive. This area is general commercial on the city's visualing map, and the request is consistent with that. The staff notified seventeen surrounding property owners within the notification boundary there, received no responses. It is the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval of this request for B C one zoning, this is by a vote of four to zero. We did have one commissioner abstain at that time, and I'd like to answer any questions you have about this particular case.
Mr. Rivera.
Is there a school nearby?
Uh, not within a notification, I'm sorry, not within a TBC guideline boundary. We did check for schools, we obviously knew there are no hospitals and daycares in the area.
Anybody else?
I just want to clear that out.
Okay. Everybody else good? All right. Next item is PH eighteen dash zero one seven, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by the Margaret Dorothy Steffick Marital Trust, case number Z eighteen dash eleven, to rezone Lot Seventeen, Block One, Steffick Trust Edition, Phase Four, from B five Business District to R two, two-family residential district. The property is addressed at seven hundred Steffick Drive in Colleen, Texas. Mr. McAween.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, back in two thousand fourteen, the property owners petitioned you to rezone the property from R two to B five, it was part of a larger zoning request for this area along Steffick Drive. At that time, it was granted, and since then, development has occurred along Slatacheck Drive, but now that we've got the residential uses in, what you'll see, and I'll step away for just a second, is this area here is right beside residential uses, and it essentially frames the beginning of the subdivision. So now that we have the residential uses on the ground, the developer is looking at transitioning that to residential, I think it will work better just to have this entire area as residential, and then have lots face inward as opposed to having a commercial use of but along these residential uses. The intent, of course, is to put in two-family zoning, which matches the existing two-family that we have along Slatacheck, and the area outside of the zoning request, of course, will stay as B five. There's quite a bit of undeveloped commercial property here, and I think he's trying to drive some interest by putting in just some additional rooftops. In our review of the case, we thought it made sense to build out this lot, but of course we are concerned about losing any more commercial property, and I think that the developer's aware of that. We notified twenty surrounding property owners, and did receive one protest from Mr. Harry Simon, he's the owner of six oh one Slatacheck Drive. We received one response of support from Ms. Muriel Haynes, she's the owner of five eleven Dolores Drive, which is the street just further to the south. The Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to you councils for approval of the R two zoning for this site, that was by a vote of five to zero, and again, the intent is to finish out the residential subdivision with residential uses as opposed to having that imposition of commercial right there at the corner. I'd like to answer any questions you have about this case.
Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Approximately how many dwellings will go into that lot?
We were shown a proposal for four, we expressed some concerns because of the deep curve and the, I'm sorry, deep curve is a, actually a corner turn for Slatacheck, so I think they're going to retool their efforts pending your decision next Tuesday. If the staff is not comfortable with the access, then they won't have as many lots. We're not going to have dangerous drive openings there as you turn a corner along Slatacheck.
But that would be a major concern as, as, as you look at that, it's, uh, uh, Steffick Drive is, is more like a B arter, arterial, it's wide.
Yes.
And that's almost a high-speed turn in that curve there. People then coming out, you're going to build dwellings, it will block off both of those viewpoints there as they come up, if we have a high density into there. Is, is, is this council one's concern?
We are, just to inform the council, we typically look at your driveway spacing anytime we get along an intersection, and that return there is, we've already expressed a concern about that, so we'll see what they can do. If it's not meeting safety guidelines with regard to our engineering standards, then it simply will have to be retooled by them once again.
Yes, sir, and I have concern too, is we're, you're going to have people backing out and out of their driveway right into an intersection, well, two intersections really as we create. That it's, and the reason why I raise that concern again, Mr. Mayor, I will continue to raise this concern, is because once we approve this, um, the, we will not see that again. It'll go to the P and Z for plating, they will plaid it, and this, this body will not have a, a way to overturn what we might think would be a, um, a concern from this body, or, or even individual members from this body, once it gets platted, where, I still want to see that plating come back to the council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Johnson.
This is not to sound rude or disrespectful, but I placed the item on the City Council agenda last year, asking if Council would, would consider taking plat authority back. Their vote failed by a four, a vote of four to three, so this is the fourth time that I've heard that argument. If that's something we need to discuss, and we want to take plat and approve authority back, then let's talk about it, and let's take the authority back from Planning and Zoning Commission.
All right, anybody else? Mrs. Fleming.
Tony.
Yes, ma'am.
Two people that objected, is there anything in the minutes that indicates why they objected? And what was their reasoning to do that?
You had two responders, one of which was an objection, Mr. Harry Simon, I, I put in your packet, but I'll just read it for you. His concern is that this time, there are three vacancies in our area. More units will make it harder to rent and cause more car congestion on our streets. Ms. Haynes actually came into the planning office and wrote her support and just said she favors the rezone, I think she doesn't want to have the commercial that close, even though she's a street down, she just would prefer to have residential there.
Yeah, thank you. The reason I ask that is some of the citizens that may want to know why, I read that already, so I just wanted some of the people in the audience to know why those two people objected. Thank you, Tony.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Mr. McAween. That moves us back to our DS items. Next item is DS eighteen dash zero five six, City Manager Updates, Colleen Fort Hood Regional Airport Air Service Development, and I think he passed all the council members a little pamphlet there, flyer already, so, Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, that packet I gave you contained three documents, one was titled, Clean Fort Hood Regional Airport abbreviated Air Service Development, the next one was Staff Airfare Comparison, and there was a document that shows the information by city and fare amount that was used to create the previous document. I'm going to start with the Air Service Development document to, to highlight some of the, the goals that the airport is currently focused on, is one is to sustain and/or grow existing service with American and United, as you know, Delta's no longer there. Second goal is attract new air service destinations and/or air carriers. It's important to note the staff does communicate with United and American often, at least quarterly, to discuss service levels and expectations both ways, and they also attend air service development meetings to try to recruit, or at least gain interest in, from other airlines in Colleen. One of the, the, I guess, some of the, one of the major issues we're dealing with for this particular regional airport is the proximity it is, it has with Austin. Austin obviously is the capital, it has a high-tech industry, a lot of it, University of Texas is located there, entertainment venues, major entertainment venues, and Colleen, while it's a growing community, it just does not have that kind of industry or venues or entertainment. So perhaps the only thing that we have at this stage that rivals that level would be Fort Hood itself, but we don't have enough of it. But that is probably the, the number one issue, because people can literally drive an hour and twenty minutes one way and hop a plane at, from, from their perspective at a lower rate, and sometimes that is true, the rates can be lower. But that, that said, I'd ask you to drop down, third paragraph from the bottom, it talks about, it talks about the staff over the past several years have met with numerous airlines, I won't mention them all, but you can see there they've met with a lot of them, as well as numerous smaller airlines and charter casino carriers, and in some cases they've met, as is shown here, numerous times with those airlines trying to drive up interest in Colleen. But the bottom paragraph hopefully will set some light on some potential that staff, and I'm sure everyone around this table would share interest in, and that is they, we've applied for a grant, it's called the Small Community Air Service Development Grant, and its purpose is to attract air carrier for a possible Denver route. The grant has not been awarded, so there's been no announcement to the, to this date, but we are looking forward to hearing whether we are going to receive it or not, and if we do, those discussions will take place, and we'll have a plan to try to bring a carrier on board that would provide that Denver route. The next document I'd like to highlight is the Staff Airfare Comparison, there's a lot of questions last time we met about what staff are doing to be competitive within the market, or are we even competitive in the market? Well, the staff has been for quite some time providing weekly airfare comparison, comparisons between Colleen and Austin, Dallas, Fort Worth, and Waco. As you, as it shows on this document, there's fourteen markets they compare, they have the same methodology, and that's the fourteen-day advanced fares, including taxes and fees, round trip returning in seven days, and lowest published economy fare. So they use that, and they, they do these comparisons the same time each week. And if you notice down about midway, it says the comparison shows clean airfares compared to Austin. It shows on one, Colleen lower in seven of the fourteen United airline markets, Colleen is lower in five of the fourteen American airline markets, and Colleen is lower in ten of the twelve Southwest airline markets, and when compared to Waco, Colleen is lower twelve of the fourteen markets. So that hopefully will give you a better understanding of where we stand, and again, that supporting documentation's on the next page, so if you want to get more specific about the cities and the airfare that, that was used for this comparison, that's available to you. If you drop down all the way to the bottom of that page, it shows historically, regional markets always have higher airfares than hubs or airports classified as medium or large hub airports, for example, Austin. But compared to other small regional airports, our airfares are much lower in competitive, and I think that would hold true when you compare Colleen to Waco, we're beating them out twelve to fourteen markets, that's, that's supportive of that assertion. But that information's there for you, and if you have any questions, be happy to answer. We don't have Matt here tonight, but we have Mike Wilson, and we'll try to get what information we can to you.
Mr. Johnson.
I was writing, so I couldn't hear what you said, you said the airfare comparison for top destinations, that based on what, what, what did you get?
Well, the criteria, if you look at that comparison sheet, this where it says, K, K F H R A Staff Airfare Comparison, go a bit down about the middle of it, I'm sorry, go up to the first four bullets, and explains the methodology used, and they're using specifically fourteen advanced, fourteen-day advanced fares, they're including all taxes and fees, they're looking at round trip returning in seven days, and the lowest published economy fare, and they actually use the airline websites for that comparison. So that's, that should give you some idea of how they got, how they went about collecting this data, and they do it on a weekly basis. Could I answer your question, sir?
We have either one of, one or two problems, either this is bad data, or either the airport isn't doing a good enough PR job. The point is that we're getting more citizens that are continuing to fly out of the Austin Airport, and so if that's an internal issue, and we need to do a better PR job, then that's something that we need to do. What I would like to see in the future is that airport aviation staff bring this information directly to the citizens, because there is a big disconnect, and I would tell you, I travel at least one, once a month out of the state, I have never, in the seven trips that I've taken this year long, found a flight cheaper than two hundred dollars, and I go from San Diego to DC.
And I don't know if, and I'm not a representative of the airport, we can ask Mike, but I, I don't know if those tickets you were referring to were purchased further out, which perhaps might change that, but one of the things I think, you're talking about marketing, I think looking at how we can distinguish ourselves apart from Austin, there are a lot of good things, it's almost like your private airport out here, it's that nice of an airport, you don't stand in lines very long. I mean, there's a lot of advantages we have over others, but what we need to do, as you said, we need to come up with some type of marketing campaign and push that, and this message to let everybody know that it is of value. The question is, is are we ever going to be able to be at the price level of Austin? Probably not as a regional airport, but perhaps we can sell some of those quality of life as it pertains to airports better than they can. And I don't know the answer to that yet, but Matt and I have had that discussion, and will continue to do that, and hopefully, if it would be beneficial to Council perhaps, every so often bring this back to kind of give you an update where we are, where, as opposed to where we've been in regards to airfare comparisons, and as far as the marketing campaign, I don't have any problem getting with City Manager and making sure that we give you all a brief on it once we have a better handle on it.
Because if we don't figure something out, the numbers are going to continue to decrease.
I agree, I agree. I think we're heading towards more of a subsidy requirement out of the general fund if something's not done. And we won't need it this year, we won't need it in 2019, of course, that's what we're working on. But as you look further out, if nothing changes, we are going to have to start looking at subsidy because it will not support itself in the capacity it's currently doing.
And if the citizens don't think they're getting fair rates out of Colleen Airport, they're not going to fly out of there.
And it's important to also know those rates aren't established by us. Now, I do know that there are some times, and it's reflected in this report, where those rates get too high, and staff starts in discussions with the airlines, and they've been able to keep the rates lower than some of the area regional airports. So those discussions have been beneficial in the past, but there's got to be, there's got to be a better way moving forward in order to get that value there. And if that's more discussions, more routes, something that others can't offer, that might be the way to go.
Definitely good, and hopefully we can get a vendor in there. The citizens are warming up noodles in the gift shop.
Yeah, I hear you.
Mr. Harris.
I was just curious, I don't know if you'd be able to answer this question or Mike will, but in regards to where we are now with the airport, even as we talk about, you know, the parking and so forth, is this something that just came up, or is this something that was recognized like years ago that this may be a potential problem? Because, you know, when we look at, when you look at, you know, I guess, basic business operations, you know, a lot of businesses, well, most businesses, they do projections, and they look at what will gain them money and what will lose them money. So I guess my question is, was this issue seen like years before? And if it was, was it ever brought up before now? Or is just this year, the first time, it's actually just been recognized and being brought up at this moment in time?
Are we referring to the parking fee issue?
It's the next item.
It's the next item.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
I can answer if you'd like.
No, go ahead.
All right. I can't attest what others did or did not do or know, but I can say it's highly unlikely that they weren't aware of it. And I think that goes back to the aviation folks, they're well aware of those exemptions having a fiscal impact on their operations because years pass, and that's why I believe everybody did know, because it's, we've had it draw down in our fund balance year after year. And when you do that, there's a reason why you do it, and I think that's one of the main drivers for that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
It's my opinion.
Mr. Rivera.
Maybe aviation should answer this, but I'll throw out the question. When I was in, many years ago, when we had the Airport Committee, I don't know if you recall that time, one thing they keep on drill was, and drilling, that in order to get a good fare, also depends on the hub that we're going to fly into, to see how many seats they have available to make that connection. And also, if I'm not mistaken, there was a specific day during the week that those fare was put out and batch in order to do those, this type of prices. One guy stays looking for prices in the internet for travel, I think it's me and the mayor, because we travel quite a bit. But the idea behind this is, this fare looks wonderful, it looked wonderful, but I just can't find them myself. So I wanted when this data was collected during the week, because that has a lot to do with those fare, besides the 14 days in advance. That's what I'm...
Yeah, I think that's what I was referring to with Councilmember Johnson, that the further out you go, obviously, it's probably going to be cheaper is my guess, and I don't know that for a fact, but that's the experience I've had. I always try to use the local airport just for convenience sake. But that said, I do think the further out you go, the cheaper those routes are. But I just don't see, and maybe perhaps what we can do, and that goes back to Councilman Johnson's concern, perhaps we can look at some different types of methodology. We use this one for this particular comparison, maybe go 30 days out and see what those numbers look like. And I think that might give us a better picture, because I know a lot of people do look at about 30 days out to commit.
Yeah, that's the idea, I just would like to know when that data was collected.
And I can ask Mike to step up here, he might be able to answer that specifically.
That's okay, we can do it from next time.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Gilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the other hand, I want to give kudos to the staff. We asked for this data, they presented it to us, I believe it's factual data. Every one of us traveled, and we all have our individual experiences. I've traveled four times in the last three months, I'm traveling three more times in the next four months, and I am always booked cheaper out of Colleen than I have. And one of them was a day before my brother's funeral, and I still got a cheaper flight out of Colleen than I did going anywhere else. I think the facts are shown and proven here that says seven, I questioned somebody else. I'm not going to question the airport staff, I'm going to question the individuals. You come back and show your data that shows that it's not seven out of 14 United, it's not five out of 14 Americans, and it's not 10 out of 12 Southwest. Show your data that says the citizens can do it. I believe it's totally incumbent upon this body to join behind the city, join behind the airport staff, and it's up to us to go to our constituents. They voted us. It's up to us to go to them, and we promote our airport. We are ambassadors of this city. That's our role, that's our job, establish policies and promote this city. I will not be derelict in my duties to perform that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
And I'll just say, I was not implying any stretch of imagination that these aren't accurate numbers. I do believe these are accurate from the time that they checked these airfares. What I was saying is, I think if we go further out, perhaps we'll see some different airfare results. I don't know that for a fact, but I think, yeah, that's what I was referring to. I do believe the information provided to council is true and correct.
Yeah, and I think there's other factors that play into this, you know, it's not just money. Connectivity is big, and, you know, Austin plays a slight role, not as important, because, you know, where I grew up, we had Midway and O'Hare. And then you got Dulles and Regans, and they're probably closer to each other than we are here. And so it's based on the growth of the area, because right, you go to Midway, and it is jam-packed. And O'Hare, it's, used to be one of the busiest airports, no longer, but, you know, you got them just side by side, and there's other cities that are like that. So when people look for flights, one of the things, you know, they look for is that connectivity. If I'm flying to Austin, in Austin, I'm going to Florida, and Austin is going to stop in Atlanta before it gets to Florida, whereas, you know, from Colleen, I'm going to Colleen to Dallas, and it's going directly to Florida where I'm going, that's the way I'm going. You know, why are you going to take a delay if you got to drive all the way to get it? But when I talk to people, because I talk to people from Temple and Belton, and they say, "Well, it was a direct flight, that's why I took it to DC when I was in DC." And, you know, from here, you go to Dallas. And then they said, "If it was direct, if I had to stop going to DC, then I would have gone to Colleen." Because, you know, might as well stop in Dallas, but since Austin had that direct flight, that's what they wanted. So even though it probably costs more than Colleen, so there's other factors, you know, other factors, delays and luggage and all that comes into play. So, you know, it's a combination of many. But there's just, like Mr. Johnson said, you know, we got to figure out not just how to market it, but come up with something different. Because I'm sure that if we had a direct flight for somewhere that Austin doesn't go as far as connectivity, they would probably come here. Because it's like, well, I go to Austin, ride that, and then they're going to, you got to wait at a hub somewhere versus go to Colleen, and it's a direct flight where I want to go. So I think that's probably the number one thing that people look for, is that connectivity, because they don't have to delay it, so...
Mr. Rivera.
You have a point, Mr. Mayor, because we have to do something to attract Temple, those cupless coves, people come to fly out of Colleen, and that's what we have to do. Now, when I fly, I looked, I looked at that drive that I have to do, because other than I get back, when I, right away, but at home, sometimes I pay a little bit more just to fly out of here. It's comfortable, it's home. But it's strange that, not too long ago, I had a flight, without mentioning any names, but leaders from this community, when we got to Dallas, we're in the same plane, they were going, not to Colleen, they were going to Austin. And I was coming to Colleen. This is, it's something about direct flight, people look into it more than anything else.
Maybe that's an idea, it's like, okay, well, let's just have a flight from Colleen to Austin.
I was home, I was home early.
There you go, make money and flight, instead of drive, you can just fly there.
And the idea to add this data like this is, we come in contact with our citizen, and that's what they say. They say a couple of things about direct flight and all this good deal, but if we got something like this, we could show them, they could see it also. And maybe we get some more people fly out of Colleen.
Mr. Menke.
I think the other thing that lots of people don't factor in that I think's important is you got to put a value on your time. And, you know, the hour plus over to Austin with the toll roads in both directions, unless you want to, you know, unless you want to get the, you know, I-35 congestion all the way to 71 and then go out to, out to the Austin Airport, to me, that's the biggest hassle of all, just to wait in the long TSA line. So, I mean, those are some things that, flying out of Colleen, it's the only place I fly out of, again, because of the value of time. I can get a, you know, a good half a day of work in before I fly out. If I was flying out of Austin, I'd lose that because of just all the stuff to factor in. So those are all the things that matter. I'd like to see a direct flight from here to Washington DC. I mean, with Fort Hood here, it's just, it's hard to believe we don't, can't generate enough to do that, because there's a lot back and forth between here and, between Fort Hood and DC. But again, that's airline marketing, and that could be, that may be something totally different.
And the airport does have a, on their website, a calculator that you can actually calculate what you just talked about, time and all that, and you can see whether, you know, when we fly out of Colleen, it's actually cheaper on certain areas, so...
Mr. Harris.
I was going to say, you know, that's why we're throwing out suggestions. I agree, you know, with the councilmen thinking that, you know, maybe we should, maybe we should look at where most of the people fly out to as far as their destination flights. Because like I said, I used to travel to South Carolina all the time, and a lot of people traveled to South Carolina. They flew out of Colleen, but I'm not sure how many of, you know, of them originally flew out, but South Carolina's one of those destination flights. And maybe we should look at what the destination flights are and see if we can get indirect flights to there, because Carolina's not too far. If you factor in, you know, Dallas and South Carolina, for him, South Carolina, there would be that much of a difference. But anyway, even in the end, with all the solutions that we're coming up with and so forth, and all the suggestions we're giving, see, in the end, it's just a matter of we got to fix it. Yeah, we just, we just have to fix it. So all the things being said are valid, good points being made and so forth, and, but in the end, it just, it just has to be fixed.
All right, Mrs. Fleming.
I just have a couple of questions. What we're looking at is the good, the bad, and the ugly. The good thing is that we have an airport, we're going to have to support the airport one way or the other. The bad part is, is that the planes are not flying where we would wish and want them to go. So that's the bad thing about it. And the ugly part is that we're going to, whatever thing, whatever decision that this council makes, it's going to be ugly, we're going to feel like we did do the right thing or we didn't do the right thing. So it's going to be ugly whichever way we go. Some people's going to vote for it, some's not going to vote for the exemptions. But one other question I would like to throw out there, Chief, do you know 20 years ago, did they have a plan for the airport, how it would go? You know, because I heard some difficult things about that when the airport was first put into play. There was no planning for that airport. There was no plans, yes, sir.
My understanding there was, from what I can recall, there was. I can ask Mike come up and ask him, Mike, do you have any specifics to that? But yes, I believe there was a plan.
It was, because...
And they were even projecting out what type of results they were going to have or a certain time period.
Right.
So they wouldn't have had that without a plan.
Right, because, because we were in a meeting one day, so we talked to Mr. Olson about this, and we were asking, you know, what plans was put in play then, 20 years ago? Because I know some of the things that they wanted, the surrounding areas, to partnership with Colleen. And think of it now, take yourself back 20 years ago, if we had partnership with the surrounding areas, where would we be now? Just think about it.
And Mike can weigh in, but I believe that we did have support from the region in order to get that. Mike can probably weigh in.
Yes, ma'am, let me address that a little bit. Obviously, I wasn't here back then, but with the research I've done and the documents we have, starting in about 1998, there was a feasibility study, there was a determination made that Skylark was too small and we needed to increase the length of the runways. So I believe it was in 1998 when this process started. We had hired a consultant to come in and do a feasibility study. That feasibility study documented the fact that we needed the longer runways, but because of the roads, 190 on one end and 24, Martin Luther King, whatever it is, on the other end, it wasn't economically feasible because it was going to take a road relocation to do it. And then, so, beginning in 1998, there was a series of meetings done. That was the only option available at the time, because there was a congressional law that stated that joint use at Robert Gray was prohibited. So, but about that same time, then the airlines began to let us know that if they were going to be transitioning in the next five to seven years from turboprops to jets, and if we didn't do something, then they would have to move service out of Colleen. So then about that time, Fort Hood decided that they would be open to joint use if we could get the federal restrictions started or lifted. At that point, the local city government began to work with their federal, state and local representatives. Chad Edwards was the main man. They put together what I have been told was a Blue Ribbon Committee that involved council members, county commissioners, mayors from 23 different communities and governmental bodies around here, who all signed resolutions that went to their representatives. And you've heard it takes an act of Congress to do something?
Yes.
Well, it actually took an act of Congress to build that airport. I believe it was, I'm going to get my dates wrong, but at any rate, I believe it was 1999 or 2000, President signed a resolution lifting the restrictions. At that point, then we began to do a feasibility study of Robert Gray Army Airfield and Colleen-Fort Hood Regional Airport as a joint use. And so, yes, that was a long answer to a short question, I guess.
Okay.
But yes, there was plenty of planning done way back 20 years ago, 1998, to be exact.
Right, but the only thing that was bothering me is that we got Waco Airport, and then we got another airport about 20 miles from here. I mean, if all those people had have joined us, and we could have had just one big international airport here. You see what I'm saying? That's what I was wishing that it could happen.
Everybody wants to protect their...
Thank you, I think that's what it was too. But I'm just asking because I've been told so many things. Thank you, Mike.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Nash King.
Thank you. Mr. Mike, good evening, how are you?
Good, ma'am, how are you?
I'm doing great. I have a question, and the question is, do the airport director have a say on what flights can and cannot come into Colleen, what we discussed around the table? And if not, who make those decisions?
No, ma'am, the airport director has, has no, I won't say no input, but that's a business decision based off each airline. You know, we can make some recommendations, and Mr. Ben Valkenburg, as was mentioned earlier, he does go to the headquarters of these airlines sometimes quarterly. He sits down, he meets with the folks, he takes our air service development consultants with him. We take the data, we take business cases for different routes. He does, he's very active in doing that, but the end of the day, we can't tell an airline where to fly or what flights we want. They make that based purely on a business decision.
To follow up on that question, like Mr. Menken and Mr. Rivera was talking about Washington DC, and we do go to Washington DC a lot. Can that be brought up when you meet with them again or a discussion item?
Well, if it's all right, I'll address a comment that was made earlier. The document that you just looked at that had our 14 markets, that is, we do a air service demand study, those 14 markets that you're looking at there, that is our 14 top destinations. In other words, when people leave... 14 top destinations. In other words, when people leave Colleen, we know where they end up. And those destinations you have, that's the top 14 places where people end up when they leave Colleen. And to answer your question, ma'am, that is, when we take our consultant, we take Performa, we take a business case, we take all the numbers with them. And Mr. Ben Walkenberg through the years has presented several cases, a direct flight to Washington, D.C. was one of them. We're currently focusing on Denver because we think a route to the west would be beneficial because...
That would be nice.
However, there again, all we can do is put the numbers in front of them, make the best case we can. But I will tell you that Mr. Ben Walkenberg and the airport staff as a whole is very active in trying to do some of the very same things that you guys have been talking about. It's just, you know, you can lead a horse to the water, you just can't make him drink, Amy.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rivera.
I just got a couple of things. Not only, the Chamber of Commerce got involved with this. I was, I was part of it when Chad Edward was doing all this. Also, the Chilo Hotel, that was one of the biggest reasons they came into our city due to the fact that the airport was going to be open right here in, in Colleen. So, Chilo had a big deal, and the community service also was trying to be built, and according to whatever growth we were growing in during that time. And that was a big issue, Mr. Mayor. But one thing that we, we keep on talking about fare, but most of the time, we talk about fare about us. But we have a family who has three or four in their family, and they could save $75 a pop. That's quite a bit for, for those families. And maybe sometimes that's why they travel all the way down to Austin. And then, again, according to this. But in 2000, the airport had three, had three destinations to 2006, or two. They had Las Vegas, and they had Atlanta until Delta went away, and, but they were taken away. We, we did have those destinations, and quite a people, and those, going to Vegas, those, they were packed going up there. I recall going up there almost every other three months, which my wife didn't like that much, but still. But, but we had a great time hooking up straight to Vegas, from here to there. And at that time, we also started talking, because a lot of people forget about John Sutton, who was here before. And, and I don't know if you recall, recall the name, but he tried very hard to keep, tried to keep Orlando, Vega, and he was trying to get Washington, D.C. It was a big deal for him, Washington, D.C. So, this is something that's been ongoing, but again, it's up to those airline and those hubs, how they're going to be filled.
It is. It's driven by money. You know, you've got to fill those airlines. Have, have anything been said from the airlines? Are they still satisfied with our airport as far as us filling those airlines, or is there any talk about that?
That's one of the things, that's one of the things that airlines look at a lot. It's called the load factor.
Yeah.
They're not going to fly those airplanes in consistently if the load factors get down to a certain percentage. You know, if you want us to keep your lands, if you want to be safe, you've got to keep those load factors up in the high 70s and 80s.
Yeah.
You know, they like flying those airplanes full. And, you know, that's, that's the thing. When the seats start getting empty, that's when we start getting in danger of losing flights.
I know.
I will say, this summer, our numbers have come up, both airlines, both American and United, if they've added flights. Part of that, I think, is because they're picking up some of the slack from Delta. But, you know, things are starting, it's starting to look up, at least this summer, because of the number of flights and the number of claimants that are...
And I noticed, I mentioned it last time, but I think that they've added to bigger airlines, because when I flew back...
American has added a bigger aircraft.
I flew back, now they have first class.
Yeah, they're, they've added, they've gone from the 45-seat aircraft up to a 72-seat aircraft on most of their flights.
And that was great.
I think there's a couple of them, they still use the smaller one. But on their, on their prime flights, the morning flights out, and the ones that historically are full, they've brought in bigger aircraft.
And that's the demand. I mean, as the city grows, the airport's going to grow with it. When things slow down, things, and that's, those are things you really can't control. And we've had some high peaks, you know, when we had like 50,000 soldiers. Now, you know, we're at 36. Our population continues to grow, and that's helping, but it's driven by that. It's driven by, just like housing, you know, it's driven by the amount of population coming into a community. And over time, I think we're going to see that airport grow, you know, because as long as the city continues to grow, over time, that airport will grow.
We fully believe that, and of course, we're doing everything we can. But as previously mentioned, I think the biggest factor is, is the, the airfares, and we unfortunately have no control over that.
You don't. All right. Anything else? Mr. Johnson.
Is there a place I can access those, those documents to get a little bit of better understanding of the original concept and the Blue Ribbon Committee?
You're talking about the original?
Yeah, just the original, just when we really started out.
Yeah, if we've got access to them, you'll get them.
Because Councilwoman was correct. I was in that meeting, and we asked the city manager, what's the original plan? And it was, I didn't, didn't know. And, you know, just for me to get a better understanding, because if the airport was meant to be in red...
Because there, well, I don't know what the performance measures were established early on, but if the, because of the volume of documents, because if this was a major project, would it be all right if we just go ahead and get them set up for you, and you all just come by the airport, and they can give you individual briefs on it, however? All right.
And again, it's not to beat up staff at all.
Yes, sir, we'll make that happen.
It's not to beat up staff at all. It's just me getting a better understanding of what was the original concept of the airport. If it was meant to be an in-prize fund that would be in the black because of these, you know, with certain amount of fly outs or whatever case, then, okay, if it was meant to be in the red for 20 years and then go into the black, then, I mean, I'm hoping that that document would shed a little bit light.
Yes, we have, we have a master plan study or a feasibility study that addresses, I think, some of the questions you're asking.
Awesome. I'll check.
And it may, it may take us a few days to put it together, but we'll begin working on that and get it to you.
Well, no rush.
Yes, sir.
You can go, and you can look even on the articles by the Clean Daily Herald. You know, when they first opened up, it, you know, you go back in the history, I read some of them, and it says, "Airport new record as far as flights." So, it's gone up, and it just goes up and down. So, initially...
We're going to ask about the original plans that was made when the airport first developed, and they start, you know, the whole dwelling and the whole nine yards. What was the original plan? We had asked Mr. Olson that in a meeting, and so he was supposed to get back with us, and he never got back with us on that. That's what I, we was referring to. We just want to see that.
Yes, ma'am. I can make that happen. We'll get that.
And last year, also last year, I forgot to mention this, but I know that as part of the economic development stuff, we were doing a market, we were, we hired a marketing company, and I know we gave them like $90,000 through EDC. And I don't know, you know, maybe we just need to get an update on that. But they were supposed to help with the marketing and come up with, I know there was even talk that sometimes it can be even the name of the airport can do. It's like, you know, when people look at Fort Hood, they think military. And it's like, so, things like that, they were supposed to look at. And I know that we approved that through KADC last year.
Yeah, I was, I was there at the meeting. I, I think that what we probably need is an update on the results of that and what's been implemented since that study was done. And we'll start working on that. Going back to the financial, may I, there's a lot of contributing factors to where we're at today, and not, I don't think anybody can assess blame. I think everybody had good intentions. Exemptions, we talked about those in parking, they've been around for a decade and a half. I don't know the exact date. Was it 2004, Mike, when they first?
I believe it started in 1999.
1999. They've, they've had these, and all those have an impact, fiscally speaking. What has changed, though, is we've added that year after, or not year after year, but every so often, we add those exemptions. It creates a draw on those revenues that have to be made up somewhere else. And there was a time where the fund balance was strong enough to handle that for a while. But now, we're doing other projects, we're trying to expand our service delivery, we're building a hangar, what have you. These things, you also depend on the fund balance. So, taken in totality, I think that there just comes a time when we just need to make sure that we all understand what council's wish is. Subsidies are okay, or they're not okay. If they're okay, it's for the purpose of, we're talking about the exemption specifically, then as long as that's the direction council gives, city manager's fine with it. If you don't want subsidies, you don't want those exemptions, then we'll, we'll, we'll obviously come back with that supporting documentation so you all can make a decision to do away with them. But I, I didn't want to leave the impression that, I don't think any one person or any one council or any one staff member, I don't think there's a, really a blame game here. I think it's just how we've evolved over the years, and there's a time when we need to look at our finances and see what's, what's our path forward that you all are comfortable with.
Mr. Harris.
Just, just out of curiosity, what I did, what I did was I just kind of went in and I did just a few calculations. I put in some dates for flights out of Colleen, Austin, and DFW to South Carolina. And from the calculation, I mean, from what I did, in Austin, actually, DFW costs more. When I put in two dates, DFW costs more than us, and but their direct flight, they cost over, yeah, over $200, well, over $200 more than us. And then, it was 507 for Colleen, 323 for Austin, and 594 for DFW. And I put that for the dates to like July 11th through 14th, and then I did the July 15th through 21st, and DFW was at 577. Colleen was at 5, I mean, 5, or DFW was at 579, GRK was at 577, and Austin was at, was at 5, I think I had them backwards. No, I think DFW was at 594, and then Austin was at 5, was, was on the lower end of that, just, just by not much. So, I mean, one thing we may be able to look at is basically, you know, if we go in and look at what the prices are at that point in time, then maybe that could be part of the advertising, say, hey, if you flew out, if you flew out of DFW at this time, this is, this is how much you would be paying compared to what you're flying out now. Because we are, right now, beating out DFW. Now, Austin, they have times where they're maybe $200 less, but there are times also where they're only $20 less, from what I can see. So, that may be something to look at and try to track.
And I wanted to address that, too. The, the previous statement was made. Anybody that's flown very often knows that you can do that same check 10 minutes later.
Yeah, and it can change.
And you'll be different prices. And, you know, the statement was made, well, I've never seen the prices you guys are showing. Well, you know, we do it at a certain time. I'm not sure what day it is, but we do it at a certain day, the same time, every week. But the next day, that could be different.
Right, right.
You know, so it's, you know, we're, we're just, we're just picking one snapshot in time. But unfortunately, the airline ticketing business, I don't know how in the world they, they model that. I don't know what their methodology is, but it's, it's hard to track it, yeah.
If I pay $200, I have to go to DFW.
All right. Well, we've discussed this to death here. And you still got to stay up there, because we got another item up there. DS 18-057, discuss airport parking exemptions. Mr. Wilson.
Well, basically, again, you guys, Mr. Ben Walkenberg has given you this briefing, I think, twice before. So, I'm not going to go through, back through the briefing again. I'm basically just here to try to attempt to answer any questions you have, and if I can't answer them, then I'll get you the answers that you need. So, if you have any questions.
Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I saw one thing that had not been presented that we asked for, and that's of the 23 exemptions. We wanted to break out of those that would show us exactly for, for the DVs. How much of that 300 and some odd thousand dollars is from DVs? How much is from a Pearl Harbor survivor? How many is it from an MSM as opposed to an air medal as opposed to a Legion of Merit?
We reached out to our parking lot management company. Their software does not track it individually like that. But what we have done, we've taken, since this, over the last six weeks, we've taken three weeks at a time, and we've manually done some counts. And we've consistently, and the last one was just done, I believe, June 18th through the 24th. And consistently, we've come up with 77% to 79% all three weeks was DVs. For example, the last one we did last week was, I think it was 245 total, and 199 of those were DVs. And the other 46 were a various mixture of the other medals that you mentioned. So, while we don't have it broken down the way you've asked for it yet, we have taken three different snapshots a week at a time, just to kind of get a benchmark. And that's what we've come up with, somewhere between 77% to 79% consistently of DVs.
Mike, that's great, and that's exactly the, the type of data we're going to need as we, we look at various five or six courses of action.
And we're working with Republic Parking to see if we can get that on a more regular basis. But their software doesn't really allow them to track it that way right now. They're having to do a manual hand count, and they've done it for us, like I said, three different times a week at a time. But that's, that's what we have at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And that's probably consistent with our community, because you can drive anywhere and you see a lot of DVs. So, anybody else? Anybody else got any ideas, comments, questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Good job, Mike.
DS 18-058, discuss capital improvement project plan. Mr. Olson, welcome back from last week.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, what we'll do initially, I know not everyone was here last time. I'll run through this presentation. We'll go through the overview of what's in this plan, and what we'll be looking for at the conclusion of this presentation is just some general feedback, questions, thoughts on this plan, so that we can start to assemble what we'll call our final draft of the plan to be presented to you for adoption. So, just briefly, a little bit of background, it's a five-year plan that's required by city charter, and this does help to comply with our capital projects policies that were adopted back in April of this year. Using those policies, city charter, utility master plans, and city council feedback and citizen feedback, staff has prepared this preliminary five-year CIP plan. A couple of definitions we'll touch on here that we'll, we'll start to use, and we're going to try to be a little more consistent with as we move forward. One is a capital improvement project. That capital improvement project is intended to mean project in excess of $100,000. That's a capital project. Specifically, when you say capital improvement project, we're trying to indicate that this is an expansion or a new project, adding a lane to a roadway, or adding an expansion, a new square footage onto a building or other facility. Capital maintenance project would be the same type of definition with the distinction that a maintenance project is to rehab or repair an existing facility. No new lanes, no new rooms, simply remodeling what's already there. And then, the final piece is capital equipment. Same kind of lines, except that we're here, we're talking about equipment such as vehicles, tools, or other similar items that may need to be purchased. What you see here are the six categories that we have in our fiscal year 19 plan. There are two other categories that are listed in the plan for future use. That is your information technology piece, and then a vehicles and equipment. We're not quite there. We, we didn't want to bite off more than we could chew, and those items are going to be contained in your operating budget this year. As we transition to future years, we would, would intend to see those spaces filled alongside these particular project types. We talk about funding. We're, we're looking at fund balance. Some examples there, that could be just your, your general fund dollars, or it could be any one of our recently established capital projects funds. Those are termed in the document as a CIP fund. You'll have a governmental CIP, that's your general fund, capital dollars, aviation, drainage, solid waste, et cetera. Those are all from fund balance, and that fund balance is being used towards capital projects. You'll see grants and reimbursements used commonly, and then bonds. We broke into basically three types of bonds. Governmental bonds include those necessary for roadways, parks, and facilities. Those are typically general obligation bonds that have been voted on by citizens. They could be certificate of obligation bonds as well that were issued by council. Then you see drainage bond and water and sewer bonds. Those are related directly to a utility, so we designate those as, as a different type of bond. They have a little bit more specific use. What you see here is a pie chart that shows your projects by type. It's laid out. You'll note that Water and Sewer has the largest dollar figure here. And as we move to our projects by funding source, Water and Sewer funding sources are also the, the largest source of funding dollars. The next several slides just breaks out generally the, the project name and funding source for the project as we go through each of the funds. Aviation had a total of four projects. As we move into facilities, there's two projects there. And should we, should you adopt the city council chambers remodel, we will likely be adding a third project into that, as we'll, we'll be adding a new project for fiscal year 19 with funds that are encumbered in fiscal year 18. And you'll note there that we also have the Gilmore Senior Center shown. As you move into parks and recreation, we have two trail projects that are ongoing. Those are currently under construction, and... Those are currently under construction, and they're anticipated to complete in fiscal year 19. A large portion of those projects are covered by grant funds. Those are federal and state grants that are tied to the, the construction of those projects. Moving into environmental services, these are what you would commonly term your drainage projects. We have four that are listed here in our planning figures. You'll note that the top piece there, that drainage master plan, does not actually have any funding in fiscal year 19. But we did show it just so that for planning purposes, you can start to see how this may lay out over the course of the next five years. Those dollar figures that are shown in blue there, those are not current bonds that we hold. That is a, a future discussion topic. By, by no means does any adoption of this plan commit you to adopt any future bond. However, we do want you to be aware of the fact that we are going to be expending all remaining bond dollars in drainage and that at some point, we will have to have that discussion surrounding drainage bonds. Moving into streets and traffic, we have three projects that are ongoing currently. You see the Tremere Road. We still have some payout that we think will likely spill into the, the fiscal year 19. Construction is complete, but we don't foresee the, the final check being cut on that project until, into fiscal year 19. Rosewood Drive Extension is ongoing currently. And again, we anticipate that will complete in 19. And we are in the process of finalizing construction drawings for a downtown streetscaping Phase Two, a modified portion of that that will reconstruct a few sidewalks in, in front of the Solix development along Avenue D, both sides of the road from 8th to 10th Street. And this is a fairly minor project, but it's required as part of an agreement that we had historically when Solix first built. Water and Sewer, again, has the largest number of projects and the largest funding source for fiscal year 19. And likewise, it is probably our most healthy fund as we look through this. The bulk of this is Water and Sewer bond dollars is, is the 2013 Water and Sewer Bond. And we do anticipate, again, that we will expend all remaining funds in that 2013 Water and Sewer Bond within fiscal year 19. That is, I would like to point out, that it, that is relatively normal. When we issue a bond, so a 2013 Water and Sewer Bond, typically, the goal would be to expend those bond dollars within three years of issuance. So, we would typically shoot for a 2013 bond to be completely expended by 2016. This one went on a couple of years beyond that. But we are completing right now our Water and Sewer Master Plan that you will see for discussion during fiscal year 19. And tied to that naturally comes the funding source that goes with that. And again, here, you see items highlighted in blue are those that would require a future bond issuance. But again, nothing is set in stone by the adoption of this plan. When we look at our long-range unfunded projects, our, our current list is 140 projects. And these are just those that we have been made aware of by citizens. These are those that we have noted and added to the list. There are also those that are identified in various master plans. We've made an attempt to try to prioritize these based on those master plans, the feedback we've received, and the risk that any project may pose to general safety. So, we typically try to give anything that is a safety issue a very high priority. And there are approximately $881 million worth of unfunded projects. It's important to note, though, that this is a long planning window. This doesn't mean that we have $881 million worth of projects that need to happen today. But as you look out over the course of about 25 to 30 years, there's about $881 million worth of projects identified to date. So, this spills over our, our next steps here. What we need to start talking about is, one, the projects that have been listed in the plan. If you have any questions surrounding why they're there or what funding sources may be there, then we, we need to talk about those projects. Second piece we need to discuss is the priority for unfunded projects. If we have something that really, really needs to bump up or down, we can, we can do so. All that we ask is that you keep in mind that it does require a long-term commitment to bring those projects to fruition so that as we start to look at prioritizing these, it makes it difficult for us as a staff if we start to bump up and down year to year. So, we like to try to maintain that long-term commitment with the projects. And with that, I think we open it up for questions, and we can start to discuss.
You know, when you say it's like 881,000, 8 million, and you spread that out even long-term, 25 years, that's about 35 million a year. And that's a lot of money. And then, you know, even if you were to spread it out 30 years, you're still looking at about 30 million that we need to start looking at. So, even though he says long-term, I think it's an immediate problem because the longer you kick that out the road, the bigger that problem becomes. Because right now, divided out, it's about 35 million a year. Mr. Rivera.
Just got a small question. David, the unfunding part of the house for the projects, are there any one of them being considered by KTEMPO?
Yes, there are actually several. And if you'll note in the comments bar in your plan, we do have a place where we may have marked that they're being considered as a decision package. Or if they're marked with a KTEMPO number, that means that they are in KTEMPO's queue to be funded at some point down the line.
I just want you to bring it out to show that we also got funding coming from other sources beside bonds and other.
Mr. Harris.
See, two questions. First, when, when you, when you said you had, you had, I guess, talk with citizens, were those, were those stakeholders or were those citizens in general? What are we talking about on that part?
I receive about 50 to 60 emails a day. And of that, some are feedback that I receive from city council members that have talked to citizens. Others are citizens that email me directly, getting my email off the website. Most of the members of my staff get those same types of emails. So, the bulk of what we have from, from citizen feedback is direct contact from citizens.
Okay, all right, thank you. And second question, it just came to my mind, actually. We're talking about the pre-existing projects that we have right now, Rosewood, for example. Because I know we started Tremere a while back, so. But I remember you saying earlier that, you know, because I remember I asked about Watercrest, and you were talking about, you know, the bang for the buck. And, you know, Watercrest, even though it's in the, in the priority red, it may not get done right away to get more stuff done in the city. I guess I'll ask the question just, just so I can understand in case somebody asks me the same question. If they say, well, wasn't this side of town more important than Rosewood? How do, how do we determine? Because that's, that's a bang for the buck as well. We could have done a lot with what we're doing Rosewood, the money that we're doing Rosewood with. But what can I tell people if they ask that question? Well, why Rosewood and not the smaller things in, in the city and so forth?
Correct.
They won't do Watercrest.
Got you. It's a, it is a complicated answer. There are a few things that go into it, though. The, one of the, the primary reasons that Rosewood received the funding it did when it did, this is a project that has been in planning for better than 10 years now. So, it's, it's something that has been talked about and has been pushed for a, a long period of time. It does take a significant amount of time to move a project up in, in that priority for a federal funding source. So, then we look at it from that perspective as well. When you have a, a federal government grant or a state grant that's willing to pay for 80 percent of the construction cost, obviously, that starts to escalate the, the priority for funding on some of those as well. What we try to, to look at as well with a road like Watercrest is that, is there a threat of that roadway getting significantly worse at this point? Or can we, can we do some interim measures to make it safe to drive on while we build the proper funding source to rehab it correctly? And what we're seeing right now with Watercrest is that it's, it's not actively getting worse. That doesn't mean it's not bad. But it's not actively getting worse. So, we can stabilize the things that start, that, that pose a risk to safety and then pursue an adequate funding source to rehab the entire roadway.
Okay, because I remember that was, you know, I was on here when it, that was a very contentious debate over, over, over Rosewood. And then the other question I'll ask as you were talking, when it comes, when it comes to grants, and, and I ask these questions because, like I say, that people may ask me, but if it comes to my mind, then I know if it's a question I'd ask, or the question other people would ask as well. But when it comes to grants, I guess you could ask the question, come up, what prioritizes or what priority causes, causes, causes you to be more, be more aggressive into trying to find a grant for one road than another road, or one part of the city than another part of the city?
So, it, a lot of that goes into, I'll speak directly to our, our hiking bike trail and roadway grants because those are probably the largest grants we receive. Typically, what we do, we submit north of 100 projects to KTEMPO. And through their scoring system, those projects are ranked not only by City of Colleen, but it's, it's a regional group. You know, this funding is, is regional. The KTEMPO consists of Bell County, Corial County, part of Lampaces County. So, the, the group is relatively large. And as a regional group, there are scoring criteria that, that make those projects move up or down. So, as a staff, we do a write-up on 100-plus projects. Those projects are scored and where they rank for the benefit of the region, including Colleen. That's how they fall into a priority list for federal funding.
Okay. So, is KTEMPO, as far as roads are concerned, is that our primary source for grants? Or are there other sources or?
There are other, there are other sources there, but the, they pale in comparison to the size of the grants that are offered by KTEMPO. We do have some statewide funding grants. For example, our Heritage Joke Segment Four project was a statewide grant. That means that TechDOT basically is paying for it rather than FHWA is the federal side of the house. But the scoring criteria are typically the same as what you would see for a KTEMPO project. What we typically do is look to see a project that scored well for KTEMPO is likely to score well for a statewide grant. Other than that, we do occasionally see grants for drainage projects. We occasionally see grants for, the, the aviation department has many grants, and they do a pretty good job of, of managing those. But typically, it's the same type of thing. It's, you have to show a regional benefit in most chances to really make those projects score well.
I had just gotten an email earlier today, and it's like a pre-construction meeting for the 195. You know what that one is?
Yes, that's actually a TechDOT project that you'll recall about a year ago, probably. They milled up all of 195 south of, of I-14. They're doing the same thing from I-14 north to Ransier.
To Ransier. So, that's going to be, so they have anybody else, pre-construction meeting. So, you want to learn about that? Get ready to answer all those questions there. All right, anything else? Any other, Mr. Kilpatrick, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I noticed in the facilities, everything stops out basically for 2019. There's not even a planned action for a city hall?
We, with the facilities plan, if I recall correctly, what, what we have available to us is about a five-to-10-year plan for facilities. We've talked about deferred building maintenance in the past and how we have some issues we need to catch up with there. So, we're, we don't have an active adopted master plan for facilities. So, some of this is, is staff-level input. So, the projection is probably not as long-range as what we would like to see there.
Okay. Next, next question is on Water and Sewer being, being the largest. I notice that, at the septic tank Phase 11 ends out in 2020. Will that complete everything that we have within our internal boundaries now? But we don't anticipate an annexation of any nature out in '22, '23, '24 to the south.
We have currently identified through Step Phase 11, general locations. You can very likely expect that you will see Step Phase 12, 13, 14, 15. It will be an ongoing project. What we're not certain about right now is the time spacing between those. We're starting to catch up right now. There, that doesn't mean that there's not places to go still. But what it does indicate is that some places, maybe it's not economically feasible for us to put in a sewer line because we may only get one connection. And if you only get one connection, then it, it makes it very difficult to maintain that sewer line because it just doesn't get enough flow. So, we start to run into those challenges. And I would expect over the course of the next five years, we'll, we will continue to hone that. And, but it will be an ongoing program because as we annex, as we grow, we'll take in more, more onsite facilities, and we will need to look to convert those to city facilities.
And that goes along the same line with the water, water line rehab Phase Three. It ends in 2020. And we know that we've got a lot of water lines in the northern portion of the town that's going to have to still be rehabbed in '21, '22, '23, not finished.
Right.
So, will we see a Phase Four, Five, Six, and Seven end?
Most definitely. And part of what we're seeing, too, with our, our Water and Sewer projects is that we're running up against the backside of a master plan. We're currently in a planning phase for a new master plan. So, what you're seeing is, is that we're operating off of older data. So, we're a little hesitant to project out ways into the future based off of that old data. I would expect that when you see the 2020 plan, you'll have a nice, fresh, new list of projects to look at in Water and Sewer as well because we'll have a new adopted master plan at that time.
And therefore, we would probably see that 881 million grow up to 950 million.
Possible.
And by looking at probably 2023, we're looking at somewhere near a billion dollars' worth of infrastructure-type planning that we would have to, to look at. Even wiping out 35 million a year, it looks like we're going to grow greater in each one of those out years. In all of our.
And we're putting how much away right now? I'd say, and how much are we saving off our budget every year for this? Isn't it that 300,000 or what? That's where it says 35 million is what we need, so.
And that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, because that's my, my point as we look at this, the magnitude of it. We're just, basically, what we've got is, is, as I understand it, 881 million is basically only a couple of projects that go past 2021.
Right.
As I look out, in Water and Sewer, there's only one. That's the South Water Supply. It's budgeted for '21, '22, '23. All the other projects stop at 2020. The same thing goes in streets and traffic. There's nothing out there. Environmental Services, there's three of the four projects don't go out past 2020. And we know that we're going to have more, so.
One, one result there, too, is that we currently just don't have an identified funding source. There, there is no identified funding source. As you look at unfunded projects, it's, it's this way in most every city. Your roadway projects will almost always be the largest unmet need. That, that's the, the largest project type there is. And you may see Water and Sewer bounce up above it occasionally. But for the most part, streets and traffic tend to, to take a toll on funding sources.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Anybody else? All right, thank you, Mr. Olson.
Thank you.
All right, our last item, it's an RQ item requested by Councilmember Harris. Future agenda items, increase notification zone, Mr. Harris.
Yes, sir. And I believe I had submitted a second one, too, though. But this one right here, notification zone, current notification zone right now is 200, 200, 200 feet notification zone. And I wanted to suggest that we discuss expanding the notification, notification zone to 450 feet. Reason. and fifty feet. Reason being is because we saw already, we have some citizens who come in who are just outside of that small radius, but it has a major impact on their particular area. So I just think it'd be a good idea to discuss this, to get more people in even a wider area of people to be able to participate in these type of discussions and input when it comes to rezoning properties, or plastered land, or anything like that. And, let's see. And, let's see, I was going to ask, you know, just in general, I guess, what would be the negatives of the, I guess I'll ask you, what would be the negatives of expanding the notification zone? If there is any, what would be the negatives of expanding that?
From a fiscal standpoint, obviously, mailing cost, that'd have to be factored in, staff time to do it. But that will bring back a complete list, but that off the top of my head, that's the first thing I would look at.
Okay. So but as far as I go, that would still be kind of minimal in general.
And I believe it's been adjusted in years past, so we can get that information for you as well. But there'll be postage and handling, and of course, the staff time to do that, and to respond to those, what have you.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Johnson.
I have a question for the city manager. Is there like a SEP help document that goes out when we send out the notification, when planning staff send out a notification? I get a lot of times, citizens are confused on what the notification zone is and how it affects them. Is there something that can?
I'm not aware of any. We can have that checked.
I'm just curious to.
I just don't know. If I can have it, fine. I can check it out.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Fleming.
Chief Bo.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one question. We're talking about items for the agenda. I had requested something about the sewage three, four weeks ago, and I think, could I just?
What was it? And I keep forgetting. I know that Mrs. Shine is going to send me a text, but everybody, because this is being recorded, so if you can kind of talk into the mic there, so the camera can pick you up.
Thank you. We were discussing about the sewage, and there was a lot of citizens wanting it back on the agenda. So I just, could you just maybe give me some type of date when that will be back on? I've gotten millions of phone calls on this.
I will try to get it on as soon as possible. I'll get with the city manager, and we'll try to get it quick, sooner than later.
Thank you.
Talking about what, again? The sewage?
Sewage, because remember, we had Mr. Huggins to come and do a presentation a month ago, and he's been calling me for days. And other citizens in District Two, Three, and Four, they've had problems. One lady paid fifty thousand dollars to repair her sewage, and she's very upset. She's a senior citizen, couldn't afford it, and so they all want to get this back on the agenda to discuss it and try to get the ordinance changed. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Nash King.
And I did address the citizen that was in District Two about the sewage, and knowing that we have resources that we should put in place in case they need help with that, if we're going to address that issue, it should be for all elderly senior citizens that cannot afford to, right, to address that issue, just for that particular
You're talking about the sewer.
Sewer.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Let's try to stay on this agenda item here. So, anything else on this? No? So that's it? So.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Kilpatrick, second by Mrs. Fleming. All those in favor of adjourned, just say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.